Call the order, clear the hold for Champagne County Department of the ELO, Highway and Towning Facilities. It's Tuesday, November 1st, 2011. Time is 6:05. Roll call, please.
Andersons, here. Benson, here. Berksen, here. Betts, here. Carter, here. Howard, here. Ezri, here. Holderfield, James, here. Jay, here. Jones, here. Kurtz, Langenhain, here. Maxwell, here. McGinty, here. Michaels, here. Moser, here. Nudo, here. O'Connor, here. Petrie, here. Whizenberry, here. Richards, here. Rosales, here. Schrader, here. Wyble, here. Alex, here.
Mr. Currie, this whole committee earlier that we're not going to make this meeting. Seek approval of the minutes of clear the hold for October 4th, 2011.
So good.
Moved by Mr. Jones, second by Robert. Discussion of the minutes. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Seek approval of the agenda.
Move.
Name of the agenda?
Second.
Sorry, moved by Mr. Currie, second by Mr. Rosales. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. If you wish to speak in public, please fill out one of those forms over in that corner, please. First speaker is Kevin Parsick.
I'm Kevin Parsick with Invenergy Wind of Chicago, and I'm going to be speaking during the ELO session.
I'm sorry, I'm -- can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry, I'm with Invenergy to discuss the Wind Project, and I'm going to be speaking during the committee. Thank you.
Michael Blazer? Same thing for you?
Yes, sir, same thing for me.
Okay. So we represent Wind Power?
I do.
Robert?
We just wanted to comment that we --
Please, just speak on the microphone, please.
Move on the families that is going to be hopefully getting a windmill, and that we want everyone to know that we are very much in favor, feel our schools need these taxes, and our roads need the taxes, and feel it's a very good project that needs to really come through. Thank you.
Good evening. Director of State, many of you, all that. My name is Kim Cameron, and I live in rural Rankin, Illinois. And I guess I just wanted to address the committee as a whole tonight. I live in Vermillion County, and I would like to say that Champagne County is pretty lucky, because you have zoning. Vermillion County has no zoning. And I will tell you that I've just been amazed, I've been coming to the meetings here, and I'm just amazed at, you know, how things work here. I will tell you that Champagne County has an opportunity to grow itself, I think, in two ways, one of two ways. One is either by people, or one is by turbines. And I can guarantee you that there are many, many rural residents that are looking and waiting and watching to see what county we can all move to so that we don't have to live in an industrial power plant. And I just wanted you all to know that tonight, that there are many, many people watching and waiting to see what you all are going to do. And a lot of us would love to come and live in Champagne County, but without turbines. So I just wanted you all to know that. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Can we close that? Communications from the board. Disputers.
Just one more time, I'd like to let the constituents of District 6 and the new reform District 6 that I'm heading to town hall on Sunday, 1 to 2, at the Champagne Public Library in C. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the first area, highway transportation. Mr. Currie? All right, you get to come up here. Apparently some people filled out public presentation forms, but they never got to me. Is that true?
You just put them over there.
Okay.
I move that the chair be on the way to review the public participation. Have you all these run steps?
Yeah, thank you. Move by Mr. Parsick, and by Mr. Ezri, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, public participation.
Bill Ingram. Danville, Canton, Illinois, Vermillion County. I don't have that much to say. The facts and the history, I've already discussed numerous times. I will echo the sentiments that at least Champagne has zoning, and they're looking at this rather than just rolling over and taking the words of the developer. My only concern is, you need to look into the wind power. I'm not going to argue or debate or bring up points, I've already done that. Basically, it's the most expensive energy you can get. It will not stand on its own two feet without subsidies. Subsidies go as much as 60 percent. That is your money. You're getting some money for the windmills. You're going to pay back in spades on the reclamation, the roads, when the subsidies are pulled in. It's just fact. It's a green dream, and it will not work. How can I say that? The history tells you that's what has happened everywhere. The only people that will come out on this are the Invenergy people. That's all I have to say. I could go on for hours, give you facts. I could give you one that might stick in your mind. That is, a recent study of the money spent and the actual green jobs made, figured out to about $8 million per green job. I have the report, had to get it on a Freedom of Information Act. That's all I can tell you. You people are all intelligent, you can make up your own minds. But, in my opinion, it's a fool's game. And the only people coming out are the developers. Thank you for your time.
I'm Mike Bab, I'm supervisor in Compromised Township. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to express to the county board the benefits that Compromised Township would receive if the wind farm was approved. At our last township meeting, our road commissioner, Marvin Johnson, was telling us that there's a check for $182,000 waiting for us if the wind farms were approved. And these funds were designed to help with any unexpected expenses from the farm, and also, we could use those funds for improving roads and bridges in our township, which would be a big benefit for our township. We are anticipating, right now, about 28 windmills in Compromised Township. That would generate about $40,000 a year in all of our taxing units for the township. We would have 14 miles improved with this wind farm. We have, I know of at least two of those 14 miles are in extreme need of repair, and the township just didn't have the money. We don't have the money to improve those roads the way they should be. So that's going to be a benefit to the township. It also is a chance to have some economic growth in the rural areas. I know in Compromised Township, no one's going to build a factory, you're not even going to get any subdivisions out there. It's an opportunity not only to benefit the local economy, but all of the taxing bodies. I think maybe a month or so ago, I saw in the paper where even the county board possibly had put in next year's budget $100,000 anticipation from the permits from the wind farm. So it would benefit the county, the township, school districts. I am also on the Armstrong Township High School Board, which Armstrong's located in Vermillion County, but we do have, a part of the district is in Champagne County. So the majority of those windmills in Compromised Township would be in Armstrong High School District. But myself, being a board member, I know in Vermillion County, we're going to get about 90 windmills for our district. If Champagne County doesn't approve windmills in Champagne County, I'm confident that those 28 windmills will just go east and go to Vermillion County. So as a high school board member, I'm not worried about that, but as a township, Compromised Township official, I am concerned that if they are not allowed in Champagne County, of the economic benefits that we're going to be losing. Thank you.
Yes, I'm the Highway Commissioner, Compromised Township, and I hate to go over too much what Mike just said, but getting back to our roads, we can't afford to do what they're offering to do. They're going to spend about $158,000 a mile to rebuild it, and in our lifetime, we couldn't afford to do that in Compromised Township with the tax money that's coming in, with the money that's coming to the Highway Department. I'm just totally in favor of it for the road district. And as a resident, there's going to be windmills across from my house on the setbacks, and I have no opposition to that. So if anybody has any questions or anything, that's my feeling as well. Thank you.
Okay, one more time, Ezri, public participation. Okay, we'll close it, and just go back to Mr. Burris.
Yes, questions? Sure. We had folks speaking here about the wind farm, and then we had people from the company reserving the right to speak when the ELO is in session. Is that same right going to be granted to the other clubs?
That's up to the body.
Well, can they reserve it?
I think -- yeah, I mean, the representatives from the company are professionals, the company and they're different than the public, just a category of rules. But I mean, if the body wants to allow the public to participate, absolutely. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
They're not, they are professionals that agree, but they're not a disinterested party where they're advising the board in a professional capacity. They are a party that has a specific interest. And I think that's a little bit different.
Well, I guess we'd rather -- okay, well.
My concern is that when we're actually at the ELO, we're going to be hearing from one side that has an interest, and the folks that disagree are not allowed to directly make a presentation contrary to that stated interest while we're actually substantively dealing with the subject.
Well, there's two ways we could do it. Let's see if we have the representatives from the company speak now, with everybody spoken, or we can open up everybody that comes around to discuss the agenda. Mr. McGinty?
Based on what Tom's saying, I would suggest hearing from the representatives now, and then saving our opportunity to suspend the rules accordingly when we reach the ELO portion of the agenda for questions.
Okay. I would like to ask a couple of questions, so let's --
Otherwise, I suspect it could be a free-for-all.
Okay, since we've not gone on to this, for the language of public participation, do the representatives from the company have some prepared statements they can make at this time?
Sure. Please do.
Who's going to put a power point that I've set up for the year for the circle?
Can I ask, hold on, Mr. Burris?
Just a minute. I've already got it set up.
The presentation?
About 15 minutes.
Okay.
Please, a presentation.
We're going to hand it out. We have the total hour for public participation. We would have to suspend the --
Suspend the rules.
Okay. The most, we did the most to suspend the rules.
So good.
Allow more than five minutes. Move Mr. Langenhain, second, and Mr. Richards. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, well, we have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Parsick, I'm Vice President with Invenergy.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Blazer, again, counsel for Invenergy. Given the timeframe we're dealing with here --
Actually, each of you could have five minutes. For a person.
We'll figure it out. All right, thank you.
I'll take it, thank you. Thank you for your time. What I'd like to do, there's an entire presentation that's been passed out, you're welcome to take a look at that. I'd like to focus on the key items towards the end of the presentation, and I'll go to those right now. And that has to do with the approval or the recommendation that had come out of the ZBA. There's a number of items that are listed in there regarding community benefits that I will pass through. But the bottom line is, the effort was taken, and I appreciate the time and effort that the ZBA and the staff went through in evaluating our application. And as I understand, as the recommendation came out, there were two issues with regard to the reclamation agreement and the noise compliance. I'd like to point out that, I'd like to go through these two items very quickly. The reclamation agreement, modifications have been made to the agreement to satisfy ownership matters, and a regular decommissioning estimate will be updated to assure sufficient funds are available, both from the financial assurances, as well as the value of the product that's in the ground and available for salvage. Secondly, with regard to noise compliance, a engineering analysis was performed by our consultant, HDR, which shows the project to be in compliance with IPCB requirements, and that site-specific engineering analysis is consistent with industry standards in Illinois and throughout the country. With regard to the reclamation agreement, the current draft of the reclamation agreement that we've been discussing with Assistant State's Attorney reflects the specifics of the ordinance requirements. Early on, there was discussion about modifying it. It currently reads exactly as the ordinance requires. Two additional items, though, that go above and beyond the ordinance have been added, and those are, that an updated decommissioning estimate will be prepared by a licensed engineer every three years for the first 13 years, and then two years afterwards, to assure that the estimates are correct and that the financial assurance will be modified accordingly to reflect those estimates. And as well, the second item that's been added, is a minimum financial assurance will be maintained regardless of the potential fluctuations in the revised cost estimates. If in fact, it so happens that the commodity prices are very high, there's a minimum financial assurance that will always be held. The reclamation agreement now is such, the structure of the, shows assurance that the county will, excuse me, let me step back. The structure of the financial assurances that are in the reclamation agreement right now, exactly as I said earlier, match the ordinance with regard to letter of credit, escrow account, et cetera. So early on, we were trying to modify that a bit, but now it reflects it exactly. The decommissioning estimate that is part of that agreement includes the material scrap value of the tons of steel and copper in each turbine, but those, as I said earlier, those commodity prices are modified on a regular basis with the estimate, and the financial assurance will be modified accordingly. So it's not as though, as the ordinance reads right now, that an estimate is done at the beginning of the project, and that estimate has to hold for the life of the project. Just for reference, with regard to commodity prices, this is one section of a turbine tower. There's 68 tons of steel, of three-quarter inch structural steel in this one piece. So when there are people that are questioning how much scrap value there is, this one piece of structural steel is 68 tons. It's basically just a hollow tube, and when it needs to be reclaimed, it can be cut up and sent to a scrapyard very easily. The ZBA's denial, basis for denial, was the possibility that the lien holder's collateral position could result in the county having to pay out of pocket to complete the decommissioning. If, as per the agreement, if the county determines abandonment and must remove the turbines, the financial security funds and the right to seize the steel and copper for scrap value is currently in the draft version of the agreement. It's, and the following terms have been added to the agreement to take care of this. The obligation to perform the reclamation work shall constitute a covenant running with the land, and that all financing and security agreements entered into by the principal, which is California Ridge Wind, shall be subject to such covenant. In other words, when we finance this project, there will be a requirement in our financing documents that our financiers are in accordance with this, and prior to us receiving our zoning use permits, we will have to show compliance with regard to that. In other words, the lien holders will not be able to take a position for the scrap value, it will be a covenant with the land. With regard to noise pollution levels, the ordinance requires noise levels from each wind farm turbine to be in compliance with the applicable IPCB requirements. IPCB regulates emissions of sound from any source to any receiving Class A land, not a property line, Class A land. And Class A land is defined as including residential property, and it can coexist with Class C land within a larger legal parcel. The noise level must be in compliance at any point within the receiving Class A land, not at the property line. The engineering analysis and expert testimony that was provided by HDR confirms compliance with IPCB noise standards. The state-of-the-art environmental acoustic analysis that was utilized by HDR accounts for variations across Class A land within rural properties and confirms compliance. There was a question as to what happens at the edge of the Class A land, the analysis accounts for that. Even though it is a point receptor in the analysis, it accounts for the variability around that Class A land, the residential land which is around a home. This method of, the methodology that was employed is standard for noise analysis throughout Illinois, and regardless of what the engineering analysis says, in the end, California Ridge must be in compliance with IPCB noise standards throughout its operational life, and we must cooperate fully in resolving any noise complaints, including reimbursement for services for a noise consultant if there are any violations arise. Bottom line is, we are taking the risk that this project is in compliance with this engineering analysis. We are investing this money based on this engineering analysis, which we have seen to be proven throughout Illinois, the Midwest, et cetera. It's a common standard used for the wind industry. There's never been any noise lawsuits within the state of Illinois that utilize this standard in their engineering analysis, and wind farms have been operating in the state of Illinois well within compliance of PCB standards.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
You remember Parsick, right?
Parsick.
Parsick. Do you want to speak, sir?
Just very briefly.
Go ahead.
I know most of you, Michael Blazer, I'm the attorney for Invenergy that represented them during the ZBA hearings, and I'll try to brief as brief as possible, simply to highlight a couple of the things that Mr. Parsick said. I was the one, over the last several weeks, who had been working with your Assistant State's Attorney, Joel Fletcher, on the reclamation meeting. And the version that you have before you is dramatically different than the one that we started working on, in a number of respects, not the least of which is, when it became clear that our initial effort to try and vary the terms of your ordinance wasn't going anywhere, we realized that it was much more important to simply adhere to the terms of your ordinance. So as of about two weeks ago, the version that Joel and I began working off of incorporated almost word for word the language of ordinance dealing with financial assurance. And the only place, really, that it doesn't incorporate word for word is in those places where we exceed those requirements. Number one, with a minimum financial assurance, because we heard concerns at the ZBA about the issue of, at some point in the future, the possibility that the salvage value might exceed the reclamation cost, and there was a perceived risk about that. So we agreed to put in an absolute floor, a mandatory minimum of $25,000 per turbine, below which the financial assurance will never go. That's significant for a couple of reasons. Number one, because it's something that your ordinance doesn't require, but we heard the concerns, and we put it in. Number two, for what it's worth, $25,000 as a general matter is the amount that we routinely post at all as financial assurance. We are in fact posting significantly greater than that. We're posting approximately $63,000 per turbine to start, which takes into account the cost of decommissioning multiplied by the 210 percent that's required by your ordinance. The only issue that was really hanging out there as of the end of the ZBA hearings was the concern about the possibility, since a third-party lender will be financing, will be providing the financing for this project, and will therefore have a security interest in the project, there was a concern that, of the possibility that 20 or 25 years from now, if an abandonment happened, and this reclamation agreement had to be utilized by the county, that some lender down the road might be standing in your way of your ability to make sure that these turbines were taken down. So that is why, last week, we added the provision that's now attached to the memo that John Hall gave you, and we have complete copies of this, of the latest version of the reclamation agreement, if anybody wants it. But that's why we thought this was most critical, it's the new paragraphs 7A and B on the attachment that John Hall circulated to you. And I think, first and foremost, I think the thing to remember is, financial assurance only comes into play in this agreement if, down the road, California Ridge doesn't meet its obligation to decommission this project, if it is in fact abandoned. If 20 years from now, California Ridge is gone, or bankrupt, or whatever it may be, that's when you have to be concerned about the financial assurance, obviously. And that's when the concern also arises about the possibility that a lender may be standing in your way. So what we've indicated in paragraph 7A, first, is that the obligation imposed on California Ridge to decommission this project is also imposed on anyone holding a security interest, any lien holder, any lender, all the way down the road into the future. Secondly, just to make sure that you know that we've actually complied with this obligation, and again, this is the language that came from us and that we then provided to Mr. Fletcher. Now, this isn't a back and forth here, but not to suggest that the idea came from him, it came from us because it was our effort to try and solve this problem, and I think we did. What we've also indicated in sub-paragraph 7B then, is that before we can get a zoning use permit from John Hall, before we can start building a single turbine, we have to provide evidence that our financing agreements in, in fact, acknowledge this obligation, that the lien holders, the lenders themselves, will be obligated to perform under this decommissioning obligation if California Ridge disappears. So from our perspective, by adding this language, the concern that was expressed at the ZBA hearing about the possibility that a lender may be standing in your way somewhere down the road, has now disappeared. Because they will be contractually obligated to decommission this project, and if they don't, then you do. They cannot stand in your way. So then we believe, not only was it most critical, it was really the only issue that the -- the ZBA had a concern about at the end of the hearings.
Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any more public participation, certain last time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. President?
Sorry. I do have some questions for the representatives. In the interest of keeping with the agenda, I want to confirm with the parliamentarian that it's appropriate to make a motion to suspend the rules and ask such questions at the time that the agenda items brought up. I don't have to do it now?
Actually, I asked the chair first, and then the chair.
I am asking the parliament, I am asking the chair. I took my eye off the chair, that I want to confirm this with the parliamentarian. The chair doesn't seem to make sense.
Here's another way around.
Actually, the most say it's on the expression of the chair.
That's why I said direct to the chair.
And the chair will be Mr. Schreiber, so we'll hear from him to decide. First, I mentioned the motion before to suspend the rules. Okay. Are we quite clear?
Yep.
So, Mr. Schreiber can have the agreement once, or he said no, we can not, and the rule is suspended.
No.
All right. Let's go to highway transportation.
The first thing on the highway transportation agenda is the modeling reports for September and October 2011. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Next is the county attorney's report.
The only item on my agenda tonight is a petition from Rick Wilken from Summer Township to replace a culvert. I have included in your packets a copy of the resolution, as well as a petition and a copy of a map of the area where the culvert would be replaced. Estimated cost of the project is $36,000, of which half of that cost would come from the county bridge fund, and ask for your approval of that.
Moving to approve.
And second, any discussion?
I just want to ask a question. You said half of the cost would come from the county bridge fund.
That's correct.
Where's the other half?
From the township. It's a 50/50.
From Summer.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Want to public influence?
So, I have some.
Okay, there's nothing for designated, no designated item for considering. Okay, item 7B being considered.
Thank you.
Item A is East Campus Stormwater Management. We have comments from Maximo, Jim Hatchett, and a response by Brings and Planting Associates. Folks that would like to, we obviously don't have a specific action item to comment, folks that would like to address some of those issues, so are perfectly welcome to. Otherwise, we receive and place them in file. There's a motion that Futri seconded by McGinty to receive and place the comments on the East Campus Stormwater Management Plan on file. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by a aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Who's joining her? Do you not have those received and placed in file?
Page 2025, your agenda, our monthly reports. If we have anything new or exciting to discuss at this time, you have any questions?
Page 25 for the fiscal year 2011 budget. Is that the full 12 months, or is that 10 of the 12 months, like the year-to-date actual expenditures?
Year-to-date actual expenditures.
So, the line item for fiscal year 2011 budget, 9/30 to 2/11, that's year-to-date as not the full budget, is used? Is that right?
It's a year-to-day report, and we're still in fiscal 2011. So, it's through the first three quarters, December 1st through 9/30, right? Through September 30?
Correct. Okay.
Have you received and placed on file? Mr. Jones, Mr. James. Discussion? Opposed in favor, signify by a aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries.
On page 26 to 29, we are asking for permission to apply for a grant for the Illinois Recycling Grant Program. We have limited recycling through Champaign County facilities, most of it being located here at the Purvis Administration Building and the courthouse, where we'd like to look into possible financing and expanding our program, possibly performing a waste audit, reduce our regular waste, and hopefully improve our recycling capability.
Chairman, your motion. Miss Hammond filed by Mr. James. Discussion? This is.
Well, it's an information question. Are there any statistics on the chances of getting this grant? How many applicants, how many grants they tend to give each year?
I do not have any statistics on that, this particular grant for that.
Other questions? Mr. Richards.
I do. This 2065, a fully voiced number, is that for trash and recycled, or that would be the current bank recycle?
That is trash and, waste and recycle.
So, that's everything right?
That's everything included.
And we're expecting somewhere along the lines of 15,000 probably to get this. Is that, is that for one year that we're expecting?
That would be a one-time grant, and we would use it to possibly, meaning all the outcome of our audit would be to purchase our own recycled containers, maybe place strategically at one location, or just improve our program altogether. Yes, one-time grant.
And how would that affect our monthly trash bill, do you think?
Our goal is to maintain or reduce our monthly fees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by a aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. The finial, sorry.
Yes, on the finial, it's back on top of courthouse. On October the 10th, it was raised back on top, it is now secure, finished, and hopefully will stay there for a very, very long time. The insurance company and the, I believe, this man, we are in the process of making the final payment from the insurance company to the Advanced Wind King Sons for the reinstallation of the finials.
Thank you. Good job. You did it without a ceremony.
All I want to know is, was there any cost to the county for this? Or was it all covered by insurance?
It was all covered by insurance.
Okay, so always cost, the time and effort that we put into it, it's not free, but it was covered.
Further jobs.
I suppose. Okay. My report is, before we go to the addendum, is that I, Mr. Uc, myself, the chair, superintendent of the Department of Labor, very strongly considering doing a study section as part of the committee, but in January started wrestling some of the issues regarding the jail. I have been sharing with members of the board, a very large packet that I received in Denver. I think Mr. Pizner has it now. You may have it now. If Patsy's requested next, so please feel free to pass it on to another person, because I've only got one copy. I know, I think six people have, or seven have had a copy, but if you have an opportunity to go through those materials before we have the meeting in January, I think they'd be useful, and maybe, let's see, okay. There are other copies out there, so please make sure you get that chance to do that. Other business, we have on the addendum.
Item C.
I did skip, but I apologize. I'm always trying to do the addendums first. I'm sure you have updated.
On page 30, still the current balance sheet for our project, and I'd like to inform you, we have finally finished all, all the paperwork is caught up. We have received our occupant seat permit from the city of Urbana, and final bill from Roser Construction, so this project is deconstruction. 202 Art Bartel is closing out this month, and will be closed by the end of this fiscal year.
Questions?
Well, I'm just curious, can the autopsies be done during this time, relative to?
I cannot answer that. I know that we are, all the autopsy sink has been installed, all his cabinets are placed. The last couple of days, we have installed a light, additional light for him in his room, so I'm assuming they will stir it at any time. What about the cooler that he said he needed, is that, we can ever go in? I have no update on that. We have not installed a cooler anywhere yet.
Other questions? No, we'll go to the addendum. Within the addendum, there is, and I know Pius is probably more aware than I am, the opportunity to get some 94 to storm water project, use the green technique. We have to make a decision very quickly. We have given this process for three months, which is until February. This opportunity, I know Patsy was aware of it, and the RPC folks, and Pius being keenly aware of it, and there's been a recommendation to apply for the Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant under the Stormwater Retention Infiltration category. That is the recommendation. I think before we have a discussion, someone needs to make a motion so we can have proper discussion. Look back, Patsy, is there second by Ford? Discussion?
I'm sorry, a motion to do what?
To apply for the grant.
The motion is to, to, yes, to apply to the grant.
Now, what we need to understand is, if we adopt that motion, we are preempting certain things. We definitely be going with the green approach, which we're going to give ourselves to February, the cycle approach we're going to take. There, we have a very significant timing issue, and as I understand it, and Pius corrected me by more, the chance of actually obtaining this grant is about 5%?
Actually, clarifying. Last year, there were 14 projects out of 154 that were funded. That's 9%, but within the stormwater category, only 5%.
So, we would be making a preemptive decision if we were decided to apply this before the February deadline that we gave ourselves. Mr. Pizner.
Yeah, I would like to say that, given the low chance of acceptance, and the fact that I don't see any indication that this board is of a mind yet on what we're doing here, that I think we're to apply for this grant.
Ms. Burks.
I don't understand why we would, based on the chance, a small chance of getting this money, go for a 500-some-thousand-dollar program without still investigating whether it can be done for a quarter of a million. It had changed from our board request for a green proposal to a best practices proposal, which includes filtering the water, which is none of in the gray, and it doesn't have to be in the gray. And I don't see why we would not investigate saving 150,000 instead of a 5% chance of getting something.
And I respect where you're coming from. The reason this is here is we have a deadline, and it is not up to me, as chairman of this committee, or Pius as chairman of the board, to simply flat-out say, no, we're not going to apply for a grant. It is up to the board to decide whether or not they want to do this. That's why it's there. My only position as chair of the committee is I would urge you to turn down the motion. I don't think it's appropriate. I think it risks are too high, et cetera, but it is up to the committee. Mr. Wibel, then Mr. Alex.
Some further details. The project needs to be shovel-ready. That means the budget needs to be finalized. No changes are allowed, after you analyze more. Last year, most of the funds were directed towards urban and downtown projects where the previous land is about 80 to 100% previous. Our previous area is about 63%, which, of course, is not good for us. They think that we're going to have more people apply this year, but they have the same amount of money. That means more fish, same tank. I know it's all depressing. This information was based on a workshop that Paul Fish from RPC went to that is actually on IGIG plans. So, unfortunately, it's not very encouraging. But the important thing is, we have to know what we're doing to apply. That's the big thing. I don't think we've decided that yet.
Mr. Alex.
Given the likelihood of actually getting the money, I think it would be a serious mistake for us to change our direction on this project solely based on the possibility of getting this grant. I appreciate the spirit in which you brought this recommendation that I will be voting on.
Mr. Jay.
A couple of things I'd like to remind us is that, specifically, the green plan is a wonderful idea if you're a green person. In reality, from our responsibility as county board members, we need to be looking to what's most cost-effective, and without question, the original plan was most cost-effective. And we also lose some land, additional land of the East Campus area, to the green plan, which I'm not sure is a wise move. And then, as I read the minutes, and I apologize because I wasn't at the last committee of the whole meeting, it was indicated that there's no immediacy to the problem. There could be a very serious immediacy to the problem, in that Urbana is thinking about redoing their stormwater management plan. They've agreed to go along with this on this one. They may not agree once they redo their plan. I think it's important that we move forward with what we originally decided we were going to do and get this job done.
Any other comments? Mr. Richards.
How green does the plan have to be to qualify? Is this only for the best management practices plan, or with the mixed plan that the committee was talking about? was talking about will qualify?
I personally cannot answer that question.
Any project that has some best management practices could apply for a grant. So you have a lot, a little bit you can apply.
We have not reached that point, unfortunately, in our process. Mr. Quisenberry? I'd like to call the question. Why don't I just call the roll, um, sound and probably? I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Do you have a second?
Chair Alex.
Voting on this.
Which way is it, why?
Yes means we apply, no means we don't.
Ammons? No. Anderson? No. Vensel?
No.
Burksen?
No.
Betts?
No.
Covert?
No.
Masri?
No.
James?
No.
Jay?
No.
Jones?
No.
Langenheim?
No.
Maxwell?
No.
McGinty?
No.
Michaels?
No.
Moser?
No.
Nudo?
unanimous, no.
O'Connor?
No.
Petrie?
No.
Quisenberry?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Crisalis?
No.
Schrader?
No.
Wyler?
No.
Alex?
No.
Motion fails. I did, I just want to share with you that, that item was not put on there arbitrarily capriciously. I thought it was important that the board actually get to know, but we share this stuff. Mr. Wyble?
Hopefully we clarify that. That decision doesn't mean, let's say which direction we're going, just means we're not applying for the grant.
That's correct. Which is now applying for the grant. Mr. Quisenberry?
Just a point of information. When, when do you expect we will discuss the merits of the, uh, feedback that we've received, both from the experts and from firms, clients?
I had the agenda tonight.
Well, we kind of rushed through accepting and putting it on file, so is there going to be another opportunity to discuss them?
Would you make an opportunity? You need to bend, it's one. I, I, does anyone have anything they would, we'll put it on the table?
If we've literally discussed anyway, it's not on the consent agenda.
It's not, it's not an action.
It's not, no, it's on the file.
You're like, you're like, go ahead. Ready, go ahead.
No, that's all right.
First item on the agenda. First item on the agenda is approval contract extension to allow a few countywide residential electronics collections to occur in twenty twelve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Quisenberry, Mr. Covert, second. Ms. Monti's here to see me if there's any questions. Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Petrie?
Uh, yes, sir. I sent a message to Ms. Monti inquiring about money. Did you have a chance to get her to answer? And so, I bid you to spend the term. Okay, you had about four or five questions, and I emailed you at about ten o'clock this morning, so maybe you had, had a chance to see those. I did, the one about if we could cool at the university. Okay. Right. That's what I did. Um, I had the same type of question about five years ago when I first became involved in, in recycling and trying to coordinate the county's interests with the local community activities with regard to recycling. And it's just not set up in a way where the university can work together to recycle their electronics computers and data, uh, storage kind of equipment together with the community because they are accountable to their own plan for recycling and their own rates that they have set. And Springfield, an office in Springfield called, uh, Central Management controls what the university does with their electronics recycling program at, at the, this was the case five years ago, and I, I talked today with the current person who heads up their recycling facility, and, uh, he's recently hired and he hasn't heard of any changes to that policy that they have. So it's, it's not really a possibility as far as I understand.
Thank you very much for checking.
Okay, any more comments, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same? Motion carries. Next item is the County Board Special Use Permit, case six ninety-six dash S dash eleven. California Ridge Wind Farm, ZVA request denial of wind farm, which consists of thirty wind farm towers, a total with total nameplate capacity of forty-eight megawatts. Location and compromise is not intentioned. Is there a motion? Petrie, is there a second? The same. Discussion.
To clarify the motion, this is to, this is to deny as recommended by the ZVA.
As recommended by the ZVA. Mr. O'Connor? That's what the motion is. Discussion.
Mr. Alex? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to ask questions of the energy representatives who are here tonight.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, same, sign, motion carries. The representatives, gentlemen? Come forward.
Good evening, thank you.
Mr. Alex?
Yeah, just a couple of things. On your slide twenty-five that you presented, this will go to the IPCB noise regulations. My understanding is that one issue that came up during the ZVA discussion was whether the IPCB standards apply at a dwelling or at the, a residential property line. And I noticed on your slide twenty-five, the language that you were giving to us tonight was that the noise level must be in compliance, quote, at any point within, unquote, the receiving Class A land, not at the property line. I'm having a little trouble parsing that. Does that, does that suggest that as long as it's in compliance at one point within the land, it can be out of compliance at other points within the land? Does that suggest that it has to be in compliance at every point within the land? And is your definition of Class A land then limited to the dwelling? Or is it the entire area as described in the administrative code, which I think describes a dwelling unit as dwelling in land? I'm wondering if you can clarify what your position is on that.
Certainly. There was a lot of discussion about, uh, point location at a, at a residence versus the property line. And it is, it, the, the regulation reads, and please correct me if I'm wrong, like, that the, the noise compliance is within that land use, all areas within the land use. So it is, um, at the edges or throughout the land use. I think the, the distinction that I'd like to make this evening and what I, what I presented here is that the analysis, um, addressed, uh, point receptors, if you will, at various locations and essentially the house location within that land use area. And I think there was a discussion that said that, that means that we were only reviewing it at the house. And really what the, what the sound, the, the acoustic analysis did was that point noise level actually represents the, the noise level across that land use, whether it be the house, the yard with the swing set, et cetera.
But, so is your, if I can follow up, I've got a couple more here. So is your position that the, that the noise has to be within, the levels is defined by the IPCB, anywhere on the property or just at the dwelling?
Anywhere within the Class A land use.
And you're suggesting? You're suggesting that the Class A land use only applies to the dwelling and not to the lawn?
No, that's incorrect. That, that it, it includes both the dwelling and the lawn around it.
And you're, so you are saying that this installation would be in compliance with the IPCB noise limits at any, at all points within the, the residential use?
That's correct.
Imagine if you have, if you have a house in the middle of a section sized farm, that's not all residential area, but within the Class A use, you, you're claiming that it will be compliant within that?
That's correct.
Entire Class A use.
If I could just follow up on that for just one, one moment, if I may. I think the confusion may have come in and, and we tried to resolve it, we tried for weeks to resolve it. But I think the confusion comes in because the IPCB regulations are referred to as property line noise regulations. And I think the assumption came up that what that meant was that you had to be in compliance at a property line. And that's, that's not what is meant in the regulations. Regulations are actually derived from the Illinois Environmental Protection Act, which authorized the Police Control Board to, to pass these regulations. And the particular section of the act precludes, uh, noise above certain numerical standards beyond a property line. And that's, I think, where the confusion came up. You have a property on which there is a noise source. Let's say it's a wind turbine. You have a property here that may be called a receptor, the receiving property. If I own the property where the turbine sits, I can make whatever noise I want within my property boundary. I am prevented from making excessive noise beyond my property boundary. That's why it's called a property line standard. When you're dealing then with the receiving property, as you said, for example, it's a, it could be, let, let's call it a forty acre farm. Not the entire forty acres will be considered what's called Class A land. Class A land is, uh, implies the most stringent noise standard, or I should say, the lowest allowable levels, which is in terms of decimals, sixty-one decimals during the day, fifty-one decimals at night, generally speaking. But you could have a combination of different land uses within a particular land boundary. You could have farm, you could have outbuildings, and you could have the residential area. The point of the evidence, the point that Mr. Parzic was trying, was making, and the point that was made during the hearing is that, uh, and this was by our acoustic expert, Tim Casey, and it was in his report, it was in his testimony. And there were subsequent communications back and forth where certain questions were asked, which are also in the record regarding how the measuring was done, were certain reflective surfaces taken into account. And the point is, the, the evidence indicates, or the evidence confirms, that we're not just going to be in compliance at that one little pinpoint on top of the roof of the house. We will be in compliance throughout the entire Class A portion. We have to be because irrespective of whether or not your ordinance requires us to be in compliance, the IPCB regulations require us to be in compliance.
And, and your, your position is that in the case of, say, uh, just a residential lot, that there were such a thing involved, that would, you would confirm that that would all be Class A land?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I can just ask two quick follow-ups and I'll shut up. I wanted to confirm that when you said there's new language in the reclamation analysis, that's language that was added after the ZVA decision? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. It's sent to the state's attorney's office after the ZVA decision.
It was, uh, actually, there were a couple of minor changes that John wanted to mention that we made during the last ZVA hearing. One of the, one of the members of the ZVA caught a couple of typos, so we changed those during the hearing. And then in, I think the day after the last hearing, uh, still in, once we saw what the, what, at least what our notes were of the written recommendation, there was still, and we had gone quite a ways in trying to address this, this concern about, is a lien holder going to stand in the county's way twenty years from now? And in discussions, frankly, with outside, with our outside finance council, because this, we have to run this by people who deal with the financing of the project, so we didn't provide you with an agreement that we ultimately couldn't comply with because nobody would lend us any money on it. So we needed to confirm that the lenders would in fact be willing to sign on to an obligation to, to put themselves under the auspices of this reclamation agreement. And that's what we confirmed because lenders, whether this obligation exists or not, just to understand, in the wind farm industry, lenders all know that all of these projects are subject to a decommissioning obligation. They always recognize that. So the only difference between every other project that's ever been done and this one is that this one will have financing documents that specifically acknowledge that obligation.
Okay, and finally, I think I know the answer to this question already, but this is a new, this, wind, wind energy is a relatively new field. Um, am I safe in assuming that there are no other bonding vehicles available to you that would mitigate this issue of the potential that scrap value is going to change and so forth in the future? I mean, if there were thousands of counties that were imposing similar restriction, presumably that you would be able to go to a bonding agency and say, here's the, what we estimate the salvage value to be, here's how we're going to adjust the value of this over time, here's how we're going to escrow this money. I mean, this agreement essentially puts the county in the position of being the, the bank as if we're, uh, escrowing the money and having to work with you to revise the, the, that the, uh, decommission cost estimate based on changes in salvage value. Is there a third party that could be brought into this issue that would turn this into essentially a performance bond or a reclamation bond and absorb that risk?
Certainly, certainly a, a bond would be a different vehicle in lieu of escor or a letter of credit. Um, the, the structure that we, that we're envisioning here, because of the need to maintain, make sure that we, you know, that the, that the value's current, we would take, we would be performing that responsibility of revising the escrow account. In fact, we will have to be revising it for the first thirteen years anyway, as the, as the financial assurance moves from the letter of credit to the escrow. So it's, it's going to be pretty much an annual effort that'll have to take place in that, in that measure. And that's a responsibility that we will hold.
And, and just so we're clear, I'm sorry. Just so we're clear, uh, and I don't want to, I don't want to seem flippant about this, but your, your ordinance requires, starting with the letter of credit, which over the first twelve years flips to an escrow, we heard loud and clear, don't mess with the language of the ordinance, and that's why the, the agreement now reads the way, the way it does. It's an obligation that exists on every wind farm project. Is it something that could be bonded? I suppose theoretically at some point, but I think the critical thing in terms of the, any concern the county may have is, first of all, let's not forget this, the issue of financial assurance only arises if the project has been abandoned, number one. Number two, and that's a determination ultimately that's made by the zoning administrator, and we assumed in twenty years it would still be John Hall. Number two, um, if the project has been abandoned, first and foremost, the obligation is on California Ridge to decommission the project. Only if we do not, it's abandoned and we don't decommission it, do you then look to your financial assurance. And the ultimate protection that you have per your ordinance, which frankly, no other ordinance in the state imposes this obligation, is we not only have to pose financial assurance, we have to pose two hundred and ten percent of the decommissioning estimate. So I, I, I think that's, that's as much coverage as you could possibly want, and then so.
Yeah, I appreciate your time and the, my board member's patience.
Okay, I've, I've got a line of hands that are, we're up, and I'll start with the first one I saw, go with Ms. Burksen first and Ms. Ammons, Mr. Langenheim, and then Mr. Nudo. Okay, Ms. Ammons?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask why, um, this issue didn't go back to the ZVA for reconsideration since there were changes that came, uh, after the initial vote?
Well? Mr. Fletcher? Would you like to take that?
The short answer is tonight is the first opportunity your money could go back to the ZVA. This is the first hearing, I'm going to, on the matter after, because he can get here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At this point, can I make a, a amendment to this resolution that, um, I don't know, I can make it to this resolution, because this is an aisle, so. Actually, I'll wait until after. Can I substitute this?
I have Mr. Langenheim, then Mr. Nudo, and Ms. Petrie. Call ahead. Microphone, please.
I'm interested in the issue of Class A land and void regulations. How is the extent of Class A land determined? And is, is it permanently determined? Is it subject to change?
The, uh, the regulations, it's, it's what we call the, the nine hundred regulations. It's a set of regulations in the, uh, in the, in the Illinois Administrative Code, they're, they're enacted by the Police Control Board. Those regulations adopt something called the LBCS, the Land Based Classification System. Uh, it's a, it's a system that was, that goes back to two thousand and two, um, and it separates, if you've ever seen C codes, S on C codes, that separate, uh, different types of activities by, by process or by different type of business. The LBCS is a similar concept. It looks at different types of property and identifies whether they fall into Class A, Class B, or Class C. A, Class B, or Class C. And there's also a Class U, which is unclassified. So, sort of in a, in an overall way to give you the three biggest examples, commercial, industrial, agricultural are all Class C land. And the differ, the difference is not that any one is better or worse than any other, it's that different noise limits apply to each of those classes of land. So you can, in effect, generate more noise into a Class C land than you can into a Class A land. Class A land, either under the current land-based classification system or any of its predecessors, because a few years ago there was a different one, it was called the SLUCN. Residential property has always been Class A. The default with the regulations, regardless of how you might describe the land, is that any land that is used for residential purposes is always subject to the most stringent standard. And even more stringent at night than during the day, so as people, people's sleep isn't disturbed. So that doesn't change.
Okay, I think I've asked a college question, or a grade school question, in the college environment. I'm concerned with how you determine the limit of that yard that's being protected. In other words, you've got, some people have great big yards, other people have very small yards. How do you decide whether it's a reasonable area to expect?
I've got to give you an answer you're going to hate. We don't, the Illinois Pollution Control Board does. And generally speaking, where there's, if it's the house itself, that's an easy one.
Sure.
Where it gets more difficult is how far away from the house do you go?
That's what I want to know.
There's a standard default of 25 feet or so, generally speaking, away from the walls of the house. But you might have a swing set that is 50 feet away from the house. That swing set would probably be considered Class A, but let's say, for example, it's 100 feet away. And in between your house and your swing set that's 100 feet away, there's a barn in the middle. That barn's going to be Class C. So it's really going to depend on a case-by-case basis, but I think the most critical point, and there is no way for me to tell you, a parcel this big, that this piece is going to be A, this piece is going to be B, and this piece is going to be C. I think the most important thing to recognize here is that your ordinance requires that we be in compliance at all parts of the Class A land with the Pollution Control Board regulations. Regardless, we take the risk, in effect, that if we're in compliance on this Class A piece and we're not here, even though the evidence shows that we are, as Mr. Parzic pointed out, we take the risk that if we're not in compliance here and we built this thing, not only are we subject to a violation, but you're entitled to retain your own noise expert to confirm it, we have to reimburse you for retaining that noise expert, and if in effect turns out that we are in violation, we have to deal with that violation. So regardless of what you may ever do or not do, we're going to be subject to the obligation because that's what the regulations say.
I'm going beyond that, Dr. Duggan, but I think I'm satisfied. Okay, I'll go with Mr. Nudo, then Ms. Petrie, then Mr. Quizemary, and Mr. Richards, and Chair Wyble. Everyone straight on out, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll have to, again, as Mr. Alex did, bear with me, I have several questions and a comment. Would you clarify for all of us what the changes are to the reclamation amounts that you are now committing to beyond what was in our packet originally? What have you changed?
The only things that have changed between, between, excuse me, I apologize. The only thing, no amounts have changed. The only thing that has been added since the last ZBA hearing are paragraph 7A and B, which address the issue of...
Yeah, the...
Putting, putting the lien, putting the security...
Separating.
Behind you. So that's, the only new language since the ZBA hearing is paragraph 7A and B. Everything else is exactly the same.
So an initial 25,000 and then the guarantee of salvage down the road?
Well, the 25,000 is a minimum. The initial amount will actually be more along lines of 63,000, which is what the current engineering estimate calculates out to per turbine.
Okay.
So it's essentially about $960,000 to begin with. 210% of that is what would be the initial financial assurance. So on the order of $1.92 million.
Those figures were all in the last version that was before the ZBA. None of that has changed.
Clarification for the landowners. When they signed leases, are they held harmless for, for decommissioning?
They, every, we've signed what are called wind easement agreements with every landowner. They're fairly likely, they have a number of provisions that address that. Number one, we are required to maintain a minimum of $5 million of insurance per parcel. We are required to provide them with financial assurance over and above what we're providing the county to cover the cost of decommissioning. And upon termination of the agreement, we are required to decommission the turbines, and as with our obligation in your reclamation agreement, take the foundations down to four feet below ground surface. And there's also a broad form indemnity provision, where we indemnify the landowners for any damages, any anything that may arise from the presence of a wind turbine on their property.
So with your cash commitments over the 12-year period, what portion is the salvage value represent for the difference? What is that?
The salvage value was about 84% of the physical construction activity that would have to take place. In other words, the crane, the removal, the removal, so about 84% is what currently the estimate, based on five-year averages for the tonnage associated with the steel and the copper. That, 84% debits out the, the cost of removing those and taking them down and shipping them out.
84% of the total money's coming to us will come out of salvage?
No, I'm sorry. No, let me, let me step back, let me clarify that. The, the cost, I've got the notes here. It was four million... It was approximately, the engineer's estimate to remove the materials, haul it, was approximately $5 million.
Right.
And the salvage value from those materials is approximately $4 million. So there's about a million dollar difference between the physical work and the value, the tonnage value of those materials.
If, if these things go obsolete, and this body's heard me say this before, if these things go obsolete, it'll be obsolete nationwide. Would you agree? It's not just going to be Champaign County.
I mean...
And I'm not sure if you've factored in what the salvage value is going to be when that kind of comes on the market. As, just as an example, in the last three months, I happen to follow commodities as an investor, and on the end of August, copper was at 420 a pound, and 930 a month later was 315, a 25% drop. 1031, it went to 363, which still is a 13.5% drop, and from yesterday to today, it dropped another 1.2%. It's now at 351 a pound. I, I'm just wondering if, and going back to what Mr. Alex said, is there a way that you can bond a percentage of that value for us to have in escrow and, and work with, like, an anticipation bond like we do with nursing home receipts and our, and our tax warrants? I guess, you know, you're asking us to be the bank, as Chris said. You're asking us to be the bank without looking at your P and L, without looking at your balance sheet? I mean, have you provided any of that to us?
No, we have not.
And why wouldn't you, if you're asking us to handle that funding?
I would disagree that we're not asking you to be the bank.
Well, in a sense you are, because we're relying on salvage value 20 years from now, which none of us can, can come up with. I don't know if anybody in this room could come up with that, just, just based on the last three months of copper.
And the, the engineering cost estimate that was required by the county that, that has been performed, has incorporated a five-year rolling average for those commodity prices, and that will be updated every three or two years going forward. This is not a 20-year commitment, 25-year commitment. It will be modified on a regular basis to reflect the ups and downs of commodities market, to take an average amount. And in fact, if the price at that particular time, the spot market, is lower for that commodity, that can be used in the estimate as well. But it, it, this is something, this is, this is a long-term, this is a long-term responsibility that we, that we carry with this. And going back to your, your concern about all these wind turbines being decommissioned at the same time, this is a salvage value. This is just the raw value. This isn't these, these turbines being reused somewhere, some other location.
No, I understand that.
This is taking it down and just raw value.
But if the market is glutted with steel and copper, at the same time, your prices are going to go down. I mean, that's, that's...
Well, I think that, that's, that's a stretch. I mean, that could happen, that could happen in just about, in just about any industry.
No, but you're asking us to, to fund it in that way. How long are the leases for the, for the landowners?
I'll check it out.
Okay. If you never abandon the project and these things go obsolete, you, would you have any responsibility for decommissioning? In other words, if the leases are, you're paying them, you know, as, they're set amount and the project is, you know, they're obsolete, would you ever have any responsibility for the commission?
If, say that again, if the, if the...
The easements are through, is that what you're asking? Well, I just wondered how long the leases are. And, you know, if, if they go obsolete before the lease is in, and you keep paying the farmers for the, the value of that, let's just say, just a hypothetical on it, what, what would be their, is there any decommissioning involved in then, until?
If, I mean, if, if, if the, if the wind farm no longer is producing, there's no longer any reason for it to operate, we have the responsibility, per the easement and per this reclamation agreement, to take the, the operation down. In other words...
After a year?
I'm sorry?
After a year, or is that...
Yeah, technically, that's, if they're no longer operating, that's the term for abandonment.
So all the questions are done, thank you.
I'll get you that answer in just a moment.
Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. I would like to place a substitute motion to my original motion, and that is to remand this back to the ZBA so that appropriate hearings can be held on both of the issues that cause that concern, which is the noise and the decommission.
Do you want to put a timeline on that?
Well, the, um, after meeting...
The next meeting?
This coming Thursday, it is already potentially, I mean, it is on the agenda in case something like this...
Is there a second time? Ms. Ammons? Good discussion.
Yeah, the problem is, since we're on noise, I would like John Hall to comment on, if he could convey to the board with a little bit more detail, the ZBA's concern concerning the noise issue. I was at most of the ZBA meetings and heard the testimony of the acoustic engineer, and during those hearings, I did have questions myself, but was not prepared to ask questions then, so I would like to hear a little bit more detail from the perspective of the ZBA.
I can ask for a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've just requested this point of order because the motion that was made was to remand it back to the ZBA to make the decision, and I think that that would be out of order.
Yes, you're quite right.
I agree. Chair agrees. Okay. Discussion on remanding it back, Mr. Wyble.
Question about the noise. To me, it looks like for the Champaign County turbines, there are nearly only four that are worth...
We're talking about the remaining back of the motion, the motion...
Amendment.
Chair.
So, wait, so what's on the floor then?
What's on the floor is to, substitute motion, to prove the substitute motion, remand it back. That's what's happening.
I'll...
Okay, Mr. Quizemary.
Yeah, I, I think I have a procedural question here. I, I am interested in sending this back to the ZBA, but I would like to know if it's possible for us to do that and still have this on full county's agenda so that we can track down post cases the ZBA is going to talk about.
You would simply have to waive the county board rule requiring the ELOC recommendation at the county board meeting in order to consider it directly from ZBA to the county board meeting on November 17.
Would it be important to have that intent in the remanding to the ZBA that we, we need them to act so that we can act?
I think, and also some direction too.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wyble, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, we're not on this subject, not on the substitute motion.
Mr. McGinn.
Trying to get clarity on what our next steps are from a parliamentary standpoint with regard to the substitute motion. Would we vote simply on the motion, we're voting yes or no to substitute? I believe it's the prior, not the former, or not the latter. I'm asking from a parliamentary standpoint. Just point of clarification on what our next steps are, please.
If there's a chairperson, the chair...
I've done it. Mr. Parliamentary, please.
If, if the motion on the floor is a motion to substitute by sending the matter back to committee, so that if you voted yes on that motion, it would go back to the ZBA and you would never reach the, the first motion, which was denied. A substitute is a complete contradiction.
Correct. Mr. Rens.
Which point of information, then?
I'm sorry, one more please, yes.
If, if that's the case, then it would seem to me that discussion on merits of the issue would be, because if we take this vote and we say yes, it's gone from here and there's no reason to discuss it, and part of us should do that.
I will ask the Parliamentary.
In terms, there is substance to the substantive motion, which addresses two issues in relationship to what we've been talking about, and so I believe you can talk about the substance of that motion.
Very good. Mr. McGinn.
Have we, have we added to the motion to substitute the waiver of the county board rules for ELOC approval onto ZBA? Mr. Chair, that was my question. Well, then I would like to amend the motion to substitute to include that.
That be considered friendly?
I don't think it's friendly.
Okay.
I think that this committee does not have the ability to do that. I think only the full board can waive its own rules.
So we have to do that?
Yeah. We could take a sense of the body motion after this, that we'd like to do that, but I don't think we have the power to do it here.
Okay, very good. All right, further discussion. Yes, Ms. Wyble.
Can I ask anything I want now?
Yeah. Well, not anything.
I can talk, I can ask what noise, or what situation.
Names, yes.
Okay.
Include what I was asking.
I don't know what you're asking. I'm looking at the turbines in Champaign County, and it looks like there's only four that really are close to residences which are not participating. Has there been any effort to sort of move, I like to say, nudge, these wind farms in their dresh, away from those residences?
We certainly have.
How much effort does it take?
Well, the question is, how far?
Yeah, how far?
We have. We've moved them, there are limitations based on setbacks, based on environmental conditions, et cetera, and we have, we have worked to move those away. So we, we've worked within the compliance, within the setback, within the noise. Again, we are in compliance at all of these locations.
Still, it's nice to have, do the best you can. Take us looking at number 22, I guess, number 25, number, no, 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 okay, 16, 22, 25, 27. They're on the map, everybody has them. So it looks like 16, you can move south, 25, you can move north, I mean, they're not out, they're not next to property line, all the surrounding areas are participating.
There, there are limitations that, that go well beyond, you know, just, just the green land that's, that's listed there.
Did you tell me what, you tell me about the limitations there?
Well, there are, there are property line limitations, and there may be, there may be various wetland limitations as well, environmental limitations.
How close can you go to a property line? What is the limitation on that?
Your ordinance has some very specific setback requirements with respect to non-participating landowners. A turbine can be no closer than 1,200 feet.
I understand that, but the property lines I look at on the map are all participating.
Within the, the properties of, of those with whom we have easement agreements, the company routinely tries to be responsive to whatever concern the landowner may have, but within a particular area, we, we have some latitude on how we can move it around. But I do want to add this, because it's one of the conditions that came out of the ZBA that, that we agreed to, obviously. There's something in this industry called micrositeing. You have to go quite far along the way of the planning process up until... You have to go quite far along the way of the planning process up until construction before you know exactly where some of these are going to sit. That issue came up during the ZBA and there was, there was a concern that some of these may move-
Closer.
Too much closer. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I mentioned 1,200 feet, because one of the things that we agreed to and that what was imposed as a condition is that, uh, that limit has been pushed out to 1,350 feet. That's as close as we can go in terms of micrositeing.
1,350 to?
To a, to a principal residence or-
Not, 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 not property line?
None, none, none property.
Or class, class A property?
Uh, yes, yes. Well, because again, that's in, your ordinance doesn't, just like the, the state ordinances, the state regulations, your ordinance doesn't speak in terms of property lines. It speaks in terms of residence or principal-
I'll, I'll say with those four wind farms, or so, wind turbines, they're all next to residences which have small plots of them. They're not dealing with the 48, they're dealing with 58 or something like that, or fewer or less. So in those cases, it'd be nice if you could nudge them away so that it's 1,350 from the property line.
I mean, nudge is a very, uh, im- imprecise, uh-
Well, my, my math is imprecise, too.
It's hard, it's hard to nudge something that weighs 70 tons.
I, I think, I, there, there's a number of factors that we, that we put in when, when we site these, and we do try to keep them as far away from residences as possible. There are issues in dealing with the landowners themselves in terms of, in terms of how the land is being used. What's the best place to put a, to put a road to minimize agricultural disruptions? Those sorts of things. I mean, we are always looking to optimize both from our performance, but as well as landowner concerns whenever we do this sort of thing. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to get into the specifics of each of these, because there's a, there's a number of other factors that we get into when we locate these turbines.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nudo and Ms. Petrie. Am I to understand when this gets remanded back to ZBA for the decommissioning portion? Just what are we, what are we trying to achieve here? I mean, what, what is it that we're remanding back in the, I mean, my, my comment to hold this whole process is, uh, it's hard to negotiate with 27 members. And, and I, I think the negotiation portion of this belongs with the county board. I'm not convinced we've got the best deal in decommissioning, to be frank with you. Everything's negotiable. Correct?
I, we are, are, the agreement that's, that's in place right now is in accordance with the zoning law and sets for the establishment?
I understand that, but everything's negotiable. I, you know, that's also, you know, part of what's going on. And I, I would suggest that this body create a, a smaller commission of three or five people in between the remanding back to the ZBA and the final board meeting, that we do discuss what is our, our best options. And I, I would leave that to the chair, but it just seems to me that we, you know, I, it's, if decommissioning's going back and there's no changes, I see no need to send it back. I really, I, I just don't understand why it's going, that portion is going back. And, and I quite frankly think that 27 members is not a good, uh, number to try and negotiate a deal in front of the public. I think this is a, uh, something that needs to be done and then brought to the, to the 27 members and then we agree on it, just like we do all other contracts.
Not to address your question, but to answer your prior question about the term of easement agreements, it's 25 years with a 10-year option.
Ms. Petrie.
Uh, well, I have a new first question to the state's attorney and-
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes. Is that an appropriate procedure that Mr. Nudo just laid out, please?
I, I think this needs to go back to the zoning board of appeals, and I think this needs to be addressed in a public forum. This is not a collective bargaining agreement. This is a land use decision subject to zoning rules. It needs to go to the zoning board of appeals. This is not something that can be negotiated in private, and this is the public business. With all due respect, I mean that. To be disrespectful to you, I-
I understand that, but I think it is negotiable with a smaller group. It is competitive, the chair decides.
It, whatever decision is made by the zoning board of appeals, needs to ultimately go to the zoning board of appeals before it goes back to, to the county board, whatever the final form.
I don't have a chart of that, but what are you bringing back to them? What are they going to decide?
Well, at this point, they have not heard the bond language that has been proposed, or, I'm sorry, the new language that has been proposed that was handed out tonight by, by energy. They have not had a chance to review that, to consider it, to hear, um, comments on that.
County attorney, I have a question I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Can I go back to the noise?
Yes.
They've made some comments about the noise issue. I would like to hear from Mr. Hall, if he could, with a little bit more detail, share with the board the concerns that the ZBA had in relationship to this, um, noise issue, because I'm, I'm getting an instant information, and I, I was at both of the ZBA hearings when their noise engineer testified. So I think we need some more clarification on this.
Very well. Ms. Sammons, did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
With all due respect, I believe we've had better testimony tonight about compliance with the IPCB regulations than we had throughout the seven ZBA hearings that have been held to date. And I would love to get this testimony verbatim back at the ZBA, because we didn't get anything that good at the ZBA. I don't know why the questions were asked, there was a lot of time spent discussing it, but we did not get that testimony.
Petrie, anything else? All right. Sammons?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Leggins.
Uh, this is an editorial comment. Microphone?
Microphone, please.
I'd like to compliment Mr. Nudo for his eloquent defense of the individual committee structure as opposed to the committee as a whole. We would have a specialized group if we were, if this were being discussed by E-Luck without all, everybody.
Thank you.
Leave humor to the professionals, will you?
Mr. Richards. Okay. Mr. James, clearly quiet.
Well, I, I'd like to be quiet, you know me, but in follow-up to the House comment, I would probably say like when the ZBA has a meeting, that that would be a time that some of the members here that have issues should go and, and give that information at that time and let them hear what some of our concerns are, if they can. And on past these questions on the noise, I think the gentleman, if it wasn't presented before, I, based on what they said tonight, it was, uh, a lot of information and it made a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Moser.
I'm involved in the Dogtown Wind Farm Ford in Ford County. They indicated to us that there is technology now, and they intend to use it if they build it. They have a noise sensor on every one of those windmills, so they know what's going on with each one of them at all, all the time. Is that technology available, or?
Right offhand, I, I'm not aware. I mean, one can always monitor noise levels at, at various locations.
Frankly, not to suggest that, uh, some other wind farm company may be telling you something that isn't of any value, but frankly, it, it wouldn't be of any value, because the concern is not the level of noise that's being generated at the turbine, it's the level of noise that's being generated at somebody's residence somewhere away from the turbine. So I, I could be measuring anything I want at, at the turbine head itself, but it's really not at all relevant to what I may be doing to somebody who's living 1,200 feet away from the turbine. That's the critical issue.
Mr. McGinnity.
I'm trying to get a feel for what's next, as usual. So we send this back to the ZBA, I'm guessing we're going to end up sending it back to ZBA, then what, what, what will, what will come back to us? Procedurally, what will we be deciding? ZBA will come back with some sort of recommendation? We just act on that? I assume those are the next steps.
Correct. And, um, something Mr. Hall slid in front of me, too, was, was on our desk this evening, memorandum this evening. And find on page, what's that? Page two, three, excuse me, three page. Page three, there's two directives we also probably should give, ZBA, or Thursday evening.
And, and-
Page three.
Page three, top of the page. First, one and two.
And time, and timeframe. Critical will go, it'll go back to ZBA for this Thursday.
Thursday, yes.
And then we would deal with this at the night, at the full board meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, the other alternative, if you're not comfortable dealing with it at the next full board meeting, is to set, schedule a special E-Luck committee of the whole meeting between now and the board meeting, between the ZBA meeting this Thursday and the county board meeting two weeks later. But you don't have to do that if you waive the rules and take it directly from ZBA at county board meeting. The critical thing is it has to be done this month.
Mr. Alex.
Does the motion then have to be amended to include these, can, the motion to reman, the substitute motion to amend have to be amended to include these conditions that Mr. Hall recommends? And in addition, does it need to be amended to forward this to the full board with no recommendation in order for it to be on the agenda, or will it be on the agenda anyway?
Be on the agenda anyway. And the directives, um, I believe, as the Parliamentarian, if they would be friendly?
There's no such thing as a summary amendment.
Thank you.
But what, what, procedurally, what you can do is, is in the back, someone can make a amendment to add that language to the substitute and get it seconded and you can go with that. The other thing you can do is, when it goes to ZBA, that you can put it on the county full agenda, but you're skipping the E-Luck power. Before you put it on the agenda, have a, written right in there, motion to suspend the rules, so that everyone knows that that's what you're going to have to do in order to have that at full board. And you could take the chair, um, of this committee this evening, put the sense of the body to make sure everyone is willing to do that, um, on the 17th, and I think you've got your ducks in a row.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to amend the substitute motion on the floor to incorporate the three conditions recommended by Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second in by Mr. Quinzel. Discussion on the substitute. Mr. Jay.
I'm not sure this is all on the substitute, but I'd like to ask John a question. Does, including what we just moved or just posed, is this, do you think, I know you don't answer for the ZBA, but do you think this answers the ZBA's concerns?
I, I'd be very, I think it possibly could, if we get the same testimony at the ZBA and, and I, it's very clear to get this back to this board on the 17th, there can't be a lot of time spent at ZBA on Thursday evening. A, a lot of the things that you're sending it back for shouldn't take a lot of time. And I frankly would love to see what would come back. Who knows?
Mr. Quinzel. Mr. Benzel.
Procedurally, I guess, again, a couple of things. Is it remotely possible that this could go to ZBA and they have, they talk about it Thursday night all, all night, make no consensus, and we get no, no vote out of them? So that we have nothing to move on going forward? I mean, is that remotely possible, that, that they don't have to take any action? Which, again, puts us in jeopardy of the, the time constraint?
I believe the bylaws require a definitive recommendation from the ZBA.
So, so if we send this back to them, they have to act on it Thursday night?
Well, and don't forget that the ZBA, too, is also a public hearing body of this. So if we're, we're directing them with this new information, subsequently goes out to the public. And that's-
Which, which kind of goes in tune with part two of my question. Blue State Statute says that we have to act within 30 days of the, or there has to be a hearing within 30 days of our action. Is that correct? If we remand this back to them, does that start the clock ticking again? So, so if we send this back to them Thursday, Thursday night, we got 30 days from then. I, I'm not trying to push this back. I'd like to have this done. I'm asking the question.
Mr. Fletcher.
I'll make it when I was just here.
But, uh, Mr. Fletcher, step up, please.
I believe the hearing would be reopened at that point, but at any rate, if it comes back to the county board this month anyway, it's going to be within 30 days, regardless of which timeline it is. And also, while I have the mic, I think I misunderstood Mr. Nudo's prop, uh, proposal earlier, and I just wanted to clarify something. I believe he was suggesting a subcommittee, a public subcommittee, discuss this. And I, I don't see a legal problem with that, as long as it goes to ZBA in final form before it comes to the county board. That might be a scheduling issue, but there's no legal issue with that proposal. And I apologize to Mr. Nudo for misunderstanding this point.
Okay. Any more discussion on the, the, uh, motion to amend? Thank you. All right. Mr. Quinzel.
Just when we're, we're voting now to Mr. Alex's amendment, it's to-
The substitute motion, yes. That means if you're in favor of adding the three directives, vote yes. If you're not, vote no. Okay. Everyone understand? Clear as mud. Understand, okay. All those in favor, signify this. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we're back to the substitute motion. Alex.
I would like to speak to the substitute motion as amended briefly. With respect to Mr. Nudo, uh, this isn't really a business deal. This is a petitioner coming to the county for a special use permit, uh, under the terms of our ordinance and requesting certain variances to that ordinance. And the appropriate venue for hearing that is, as far as I'm concerned, the zoning board of appeals. So I think that we're, we're taking the right step here. I mean, I'm, I'm personally not convinced of the economics of wind power. This is the business that these guys are in, and they obviously are convinced, or they wouldn't be putting their money into it. I don't think it's our position as the county board to weigh in on whether, you know, wind power is good or bad, or profitable or not. I think our obligation is just to make sure that whatever they do isn't putting the neighbors up at inconvenience or putting the taxpayers at risk. I understand definitely the logic behind this offsetting of, uh, reclamation cost with salvage value. I, I think that's something that was frankly probably overlooked in the original ordinance, and something that we need to look at going forward. But as Mr. Nudo said, uh, you know, we're not, we don't want to put the Champagne County taxpayers in the commodity speculation business. I mean, these are commodities with very volatile pricing. I did a similar exercise to Al when I looked at the prices the other day and was astounded at the, it was even more volatile than I thought it was. There's, I guess there are at least copper futures, but they're only about five years, and there's nothing for steel or new steel at this point, let alone scrap steel. So it's not something that we can expect to hedge. That being said, I think the, the proposal to use essentially a five-year, you know, moving average to adjust the reclamation costs, I think the fact that we're talking about putting a floor on the amount of cost that can be offset, against which you can offset salvage value, uh, I think this idea of a covenant to, uh, give the county some protection against, uh, superior lenders, cherry picking the good salvage value is the term that was used at the ZBA. I mean, I think these are, these represent good faith, uh, efforts to comply with the ordinance. In addition, I guess I would point out the county's going to get some revenue out of this. I mean, this is not entirely a situation, you know, we, I tend to, I tend to be very adverse to these, you know, privatized profit and public risk type deals, but, you know, if this does, uh, persist for any length of time, the county stands to receive revenue that's significantly in excess of what it costs to do the decommissioning anyway. So I think we need to keep that in mind. You know, zoning doesn't mean that we decide what people get to build. I mean, it just means that we need to, it's a tool that we can use to help mitigate the impacts of what one landowner does versus what another landowner does. I guess finally, uh, since I'm taking way too long, uh, I just think the ZBA is the most appropriate venue for this. Uh, I think this is obviously the first application we've gotten under new ordinance, and I would hope that some of the decisions that are made by the ZBA and made by the county board here encourages to go look at this ordinance, determine how to make it more consistent. And I don't think necessarily that what the ZBA has given us now is a consistent enough record to use to move forward or revise the ordinance. So for all those reasons, I support remanding this to the ZBA.
Okay. Any more comments? Questions? Board? Okay.
Roll call.
Yes, roll call. Second. Before we do, I want to ask Department of Attorney the suggestion you made for the agenda item to amend or to, um, board rules, to amend board rules to allow.
Well, I meant suggesting that you amend the board rules, you suggested that first item, once you put this on the agenda, before you have, insisting you print the agenda before you vote on this, you need a motion to suspend the rules. So you should put that motion on it and then add, assuming this substitute motion passes, I think at the discretion of the chair of the committee, you could have a straw vote to see whether folks are willing to in fact suspend the rules on the 17th.
Okay, time on the, I mean, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any more questions? Anything? Everyone know what we're voting on? Okay. All right. All right, poll the board please.
Ammons? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Benzel?
Yes.
Burkeson?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Moser?
Oh.
Nudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Osalis?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion.
Allen.
Yes. Ms. Richards? Richards. Sorry, Mr. Richards. Okay. Mr. Richards is a yes. Okay. Motion approved. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of Champagne County, sorry, Mr. Hall. Oh, I'm sorry, straw vote, straw vote, I'm sorry. The straw vote on the agenda for the county board meeting on the 17th to waive the suspend rules to, okay. Okay, we got it. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. Next on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Benzel. We are creating precedent here, which I think is very, very good. We're also creating tremendous amount of legislative history. And one of the people said, well, if we had this debate at the ZBA, it might have been different. I hope we are going to be able to preserve the video record and the comments that were made here because I think it would be very illustrative if there ever was interpretive litigation in the future. I think the comments that were made here are very, very valuable for anyone in the future, so I hope we do have a method of preserving what is said here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benzel. Very good. Okay. Next on the agenda, approval proposed Champagne County, California, Richmond, Farm Roads Agreement. Your motion. For Ms. Esri. Second, this call, this discussion. Mr. Quisenberry.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we postpone action on this until the full board decides the motion?
Probably.
Make a motion, Quisenberry.
Right, Chair? Okay, it's, it's up to the discretion of the board. If, if we don't have passage on the 17th, this is no void anyway. So, and, and the attorney for Grove District is also here this evening and I don't know if he's waiting to, she, sorry. She's waiting, I apologize.
Okay.
If she's waiting, make a comment, we could suspend the rules and let her speak if.
Sure.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, I think, I think what I'm getting at is perhaps we should forward this to the full county board with no recommendation.
That's one alternative we can do, I guess.
And I'd, I'd like to make a motion to substitute that we forward this to the full county board.
Second. Second. Motion by Mr. Quisenberry, second in by Mr. McGinty. Discussion, Mr. Mc, Mr. Quisenberry.
And then I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to have the attorney speak.
Attorney for the Grove District. Okay. So second to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Langenheim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, all right. Counselor, if you'd like to. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Kuzma. I'm at the firm of Myers, Barry O'Connor Kuzma, in Ottawa, Illinois. Did drive two hours tonight, so I do appreciate you talking to me tonight about the road agreement. And it is also the case I will be starting a three-week trial on Monday, so I will not be able to come back in the future. I did not prepare any comments specifically for tonight. It's my understanding that if you have questions, I'm here to answer those questions.
Well, support any questions. Mr. Alex.
I think the only question is from your standpoint, is this something the Grove District's comfortable with?
Well, the road, the township road districts are comfortable with it and the compromise township road commissioner and the Ogden Township Road Commissioners have already signed their road agreements specifically with regard to the county road agreement. We have been through the negotiations on this agreement for about two years and I don't want to put words into the mouth of your county engineer, Jeff Blue, but I believe he is comfortable with it and has recommended that the board sign.
I'm sorry, who, who are you, you're representing?
I represent both the county with regard to their road agreement. Pardon me. I've been sitting in the back a long while, I'm getting a little dried out here. But I also represented the road districts on their road agreements, the three road districts that were affected by the.
The three township, the three township road districts.
Correct.
And your positions, or your impressions that they are already, they've already signed off?
They've already signed, yes.
Okay. While we let Mr. Blue speak himself, thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Wadler.
Are there any major differences between township contracts and the contract with county?
I would not, no, there's no significant differences.
Have you worked with similar agreements with other counties?
Yes, I have. I've represented Lee County on a number of road agreements. I've represented Bureau County on a number of road agreements. I represented DeKalb County on a road agreement and I can't even count the number of road districts.
Okay. Would you say that there are any major differences from these contracts than, than from other recent county contracts, similar contracts?
No significant differences, no.
How about early ones?
Yes, we've learned a lot from the early road agreements and the road agreements that I recommend now to legislative bodies such as this one are much more detailed than what we, what I started out recommending.
Are you familiar with your contracts with these in McLean County?
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay. Any, any more questions? Ms. Petrie.
You just indicated the, these contracts are much more detailed than the first round that you worked on. Could you specify some other things that with your experience over time you found it important to include in these contracts?
The first road agreement I did, I believe was dated 2002, so almost 10 years ago in Bureau County. And what I try to be more detailed about now are the specifics as to the road repairs that we expect after project completion. Also, this road agreement and several others I've recently tried to provide for what I call degradation damage or loss of useful life in that with the county road at stake here, we don't expect there to be a whole lot of physical damage to the road, but we know that because of the traffic associated with the wind farm, it's going to take away the expected useful lifespan of that road. And that is a new concept within the past few years.
Anybody else? Mr. Motion.
I know personally that this is a much better contract than I got in Ford County because what you gotta do, drive up there, see what happens since it was started and that's looked to me like this is 10 times as good as they did and they needed all the help they could get and they didn't get it.
My number is 815-434.
Too late.
Or phase two.
Any, any further questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be of service to this board.
Okay. Back to Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes, can we hear Mr. Blue's comments on the.
Absolutely.
As Cheryl said, I think this is a very good road use agreement. We've got all of our bases covered as far as I can tell. Got payments per tower back to the county highway fund for all the time and effort that we've put into this. There is provisions in there for if the road does fail, if it ruts, if we actually see no significant problems with the road, how we're doing that is with our pavement management system. Applied Research Associates has run it. Before they start construction, they would run the road with the same equipment they use on our pavement management system after the wind farm development is complete and there's a formula to actually calculate the amount of life that is lost in a roadway based on the parameters that they use for our pavement management system. So regardless of whether it just cracks or whether it ruts or whether we have some, some failures along the roadway, we have all those bases covered. And they're only using two miles of county highways, so this isn't a significant impact on our county highway system. It is only two miles up along County Road 22, north of Laurel, south of Penfield.
Okay. Speech.
I have two information questions. Does this cover anti-side erosion that might occur when the roads are rebuilt?
It, it actually states that they have to follow all of the I dot standards and all the I dot standards have that within them.
Okay. And my second question is when it comes to decommissioning time, is, is the reconstruction of the road to take out the turbines, even if cut up into smaller sections, covered with these road agreements?
I don't know if the township road agreement, Cheryl, can you address that?
The road agreements only cover the construction and a three-year warranty period following construction. If the project is decommissioned, they would need a separate road agreement covering that decommissioning process. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Blue. Okay. Mr. Benzel.
I guess I asked you if you have any concerns about the fact that we don't have an agreement with regard to the issues with the roads.
That's a policy decision for the board on the county here and that, I'm just worried about my roads. Obviously, you have to have a road use agreement before you can have a special use permit that's granted to any wind farm development, so.
Was this issue with them being specifically negotiated? When, when they're negotiating with us, they don't do that. Was the second to decommission.
No. Not specifically. This is specifically for the putting up of the towers and the building of the wind farm development, not anything to do with later times, no.
Right, sure.
For the road use agreements, I view those as two separate issues and the decommissioning part of the project is something that I leave to the zoning and land use portion of my clients to handle. Also, decommissioning is going to happen typically so far in the future that my crystal ball doesn't go that far and I don't recommend that my clients, especially my road commissioner clients, enter into road agreements that might bind future elected officials, indeed future elected officials that might not even be born at the time we sign this agreement. So we don't include that in the current road use agreement.
Chair Wadler. Okay. Mr. Langenheim.
Is there any likelihood that we could be prevented from falling for a new agreement for decommission?
Did you understand that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
You stated that our agreements, our agreement, current agreement covers the installation and that there'll have to be a separate agreement for decommissioning. Are we in a position to demand a second agreement for decommission?
I'm not familiar with all aspects of your zoning ordinance, but I don't think it's contemplated by your zoning ordinance and I, I wouldn't begin to know how to negotiate that road agreement and at this stage of the game, I can't recommend it to this board.
Do you care to comment on that?
The ordinance requires an amount to be included in the financial assurance for road damage during decommissioning. The current reclamation agreement includes $10,000 per turbine, a total of $300,000 for road repairs. It occurs to me it would be good to add a condition requiring a new road agreement at that time just to nail it down, but obviously the agreement can't be, can't be formulated now, but it would be good to include a condition requiring that in the future. But we do have $300,000 for that.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I think we should require that. Mr. Quisenberry.
Mr. Hall, is it, is it anticipated that the decommissioning road use would be different from the installation road use because much of the, the scrap would be cut up on site and then trucked out on smaller trucks?
Yes, and it's my understanding that the strengthening that would be done pursuant to wind farm construction, those roads should be much stronger when it's time to decommission. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Motion is to send to the full board, no information. Okay. Roll call. Roll call. Mr. Langenheim, second. Mr. Benzel, second. All right. We'll have a roll call. Any more questions or comments going, going on? Okay. Poll the board, please.
Ammons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Benzel?
Yes.
Burkeson?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Nudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Osalis?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, monthly reports.
Apologize to the committee, I did not get a.
And other business, I think John has an introduction to make.
I'd like to introduce to the county board the new associate planner, Andrew Cass. Andrew, stand up, please.
Anything else on other business? Okay. Next, uh, next item, designation of items to be placed on the consent, consent agenda, I think is what we want, is that correct? A.
Okay. Okay.
Our turn. Anything else on other business? Okay. Next, uh, next item. Designation of items to be placed on the consent, consent agenda, I think is what we want, is that correct? A.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Our turn.